Okay Commissioners, the last item is item 10 on our agenda. It's 807 Park Avenue located within the Upper East Side Historic District. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. It's docket number 157491, block 1409, lot 72. An altered apartment building originally built as a Romanesque revival neo-Renaissance-style residence designed by Neville and Bagg in 1898-99 and enlarged in the 1980s. Application is to demolish the building and construct a new building. This was first presented on December 2nd, 2014.
Good afternoon Commissioners, this is Sheriff of Preservation Staff. At the December 2nd hearing, we saw this application for 807 Park Avenue, which is an application to demolish the existing building and construct a new one. And at that hearing, the Commissioners who were present felt that the remaining historic fragment of the 19th century buildings should be considered in the design of a new building for the site and requested that the applicant was for retaining it. The applicant has responded by doing more research on the existing building and the district and will present that information, including the condition of the existing building and fragment and how it relates to the context and history of the district and other buildings of this age and type in addition.
Thank you Lisa, and we will reopen the hearing. Yes, Charles?
I'm Charles Platte of the architectural firm of PBDW, heir of Bell White. I'm here with Bill Higgins and my partner Scott Duno. We presented this previously on December 2nd. Whether you want us to go through all of that presentation again or not, I suggest that we skip part 1, which is really the district outlines, the location of the building and zoning issues. If that is your wish, we will skip right to part 2.
That's good.
Which is relates to the first part of really why we are here, which is the removal of what we consider to be a non-conforming building of strange birth. And go then to part 3, which is the design of a new building in its place. I'm going to turn this over to Bill Higgins now, who will go through some of the issues relating to what remains of the original building. I will say first that what was designated, what was in the designation report of 1979 and what the Commissioners thought they were designating in 1981 are not the same things. The building that is there now is not the building that the Commissioners designated in June of 1981. What that building is, is a quandary, and that is something we will discuss. Bill?
Thank you, Charles. Bill Higgins of Higgins Quiz Bar, as Charles mentioned, we do not intend to go over our previous presentation, but there are some issues that we think are significant by way of summary. So on the left is the building before designation and before it was transformed into the 12-story building that you see here. It was a five-story tenement building. It was the southernmost of a row of four that extended northward to 75th Street significantly, we feel. The building had a substantial cornice crowning the building and dramatizing its relationship to the sky and to the taller building particularly next door. It also had at storefront, a cornice as well as, and you can hardly see it here, a projecting porch that entered the, protected the entry to the upstairs at the south of the building. And these and other features have been lost. Here is the, here is the building that exists now, which incorporates what we consider to be a fragment of the facade of the building that the Commission designated and a substantial addition which was subsequently changed over time. This situation, the five-story with the six stories, seven stories inside above, is something that happened without benefit of permits from the Landmarks Commission. And so here is what it is in elevation, elevation of the original, elevation with the expansion. And here it is in axon metric. Our contention is that this is a 1980s and 90s building. It is not a historic building. This is the location of the building, I think we've seen this. I'll say this very briefly. What was done to create the building that's here now, as I said, was done without the Commission's permission, and it pretty clearly does not conform to any of the standards of appropriateness that we've seen the Commission apply over the years. This is not one of those odd first building situations where there is a peculiarity in the building's history that leads to a great expansion or anything like that. You know, I could talk boringly about how it doesn't conform to the Secretary of the Interior standards or the Venice Charter or any of those other things, but I don't think that's really quite central to what we're here to talk about. Most of the commentary from the public and most of the discussion among the Commissioners, we feel, had to do with the experiential and associational qualities of the building, if you will. The contention was made over and over again in public testimony that the building recalls the time when Park Avenue was shorter, when there were smaller scale buildings, including these kinds of five-story tenement buildings, and that that is really what the experience of this building is about, and that is what makes it a historic resource. We feel it might, would be instructive to try and sort of take a quick experiential look at what you see of this building and see if those contentions really hold up. So here is the building at the sort of immediate pedestrian scale and the fuller scale coming down from the south. And what you see, we feel, is a truly fragmentary experience. First of all, what you are seeing is a 12-story building. You are not seeing a five-story tenement building. You're seeing part of a five-story tenement building, but particularly where your eye really meets it, you are seeing a pilaster, which is original, a cast iron pilaster. You are seeing pretty much detaching from the building, a 1980s, 90s cast stone cornice. You are seeing 1980s, 90s scored stucco that goes beyond the pedestrian and all the way up to the full height of the building. And beyond this pilaster, what you are seeing is new 1980s and again early 2000s infill. So what you have experientially is first and foremost, a 12-story building and one which is pretty thoroughgoingly compromised. Yes, you are seeing fragments, but those fragments, when you look, really do read as fragments that are surrounded by later and highly compromised material. Here is a similar view from the south. This was the southernmost of those four tenement buildings. See, and the building to the south of it was recessed a bit historically. So what there was at that point originally, and you can see the scar of it here, the cornice of that porch returned. So you had a sort of three-dimensional experience from here with the cornice of the porch returning around the two sides and those projecting freestanding columns. That is gone now. And what you are seeing is another one of those pilasters, except in this case, it has lost its ornamental panels and moldings below. And again, all of this later material, clearly later and clearly an applique on the surface of the building, and again, it goes all the way up to the full height of the facade. I think it's instructive to compare comparable views of a building that is an actual surviving five-story tenement building, 821 Park Avenue, which is just a half a block to the north. Here what you see, both at the sort of pedestrian view and looking up, you see the height of this building, you see a very bold cornice which caps the building, establishes clearly that its height is five stories and not the prevailing Park Avenue street wall. You see, of course, as always, that when the facade returns to a side elevation, you can see that the facade is a facade, but here, it is so much more fully intact in terms of its survival. This is the kind of building that really gives you that experience of what Park Avenue was. I was on the site just this morning, didn't take a photograph, but when you stand on Park Avenue, here on the corner, and look at this building, it's really instructive because what you see, north and south, are tall 12, 13, 14 story, the standard Park Avenue street wall, including 807. And this building stands out with its cornice and its lower height as the one that really establishes the memory of that earlier period. So with respect to the memory of the earlier period, we looked closely at the designation reports and the existing buildings on Park Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District and in the newly designated Park Avenue Historic District, which we think is very comparable. And what we find are a number of things. In terms of low-scale buildings that are at the rowhouse and slightly larger scale, but way below the scale of the standard Park Avenue street wall, there are 30 of those buildings within those two districts on Park Avenue, and they range from individual houses to institutional buildings to tenement buildings like these. We've further refined this. After 19, or before 1907, crucial day on Park Avenue, because that's when they electrified the railroad, there was no more smoke on Park Avenue, and things really turned into the luxury higher scale that you get now. Before that period, there are 13 buildings that survive in that lower scale. But to bring it down to what we think is the real pinpoint of this, how many of those low-scale five-story tenement buildings survive in the two districts? And in fact, there are six of them. And so that experience of the lower scale, pre-electrification, pre-tall Park Avenue is very strongly available along Park Avenue in designated buildings. You get to 821, which is that building we looked at in more detail, which is less than a block away from this building, but 957, these are buildings that really maintain their cornices unchanged and a very strong evocation of that period of Park Avenue. But even the buildings that have been changed retain their original five-story scale. By and large, they have strong cornices that delineate their distinction between their mass and the sky above, and really carry that message of the previous generation of Park Avenue. Even this with 591 in the Upper East Side Historic District, very, very heavily changed in the 1970s, but it retains its original scale and it retains a strong cornice at the top. Now, one of the questions the Commissioners asked was, let's forget about what we did or didn't approve in the past. If we were confronted with this building now, how would we look upon it? And I think there's something instructive here with 591. This building, which keeps its original scale, and 807 does not, which maintains a strong cornice, which 807 does not, the Upper East Side Historic District report calls this a no-style building, although it is a much stronger in terms of its basic scale and relationship to the sky and the rest of the facade plane, maintains much more integrity than 807. So our contention is that when you look at the building in terms of its experiential quality and its evocation of past scale and sort of pre-large apartment building character, it is a building that is 12 stories and is in that larger scale, and there is substantial experience, not to mention the other 24 lower scale buildings in the two districts on Park Avenue. There is substantial experience to be had to recall that earlier character. Just quickly, Charles, if you wanted to do this one, but we also thought about what would happen, you know, if the facade or this portion of the facade were kept, what would the result be? Well, I mean, we sort of know that from what's there now. We've got floor planes that are coming in, you know, like two inches below the window sills. We've got floors that have had to be cut back so that they don't interrupt the window sills. If we were to put the cornice back, it would completely eliminate windows at the sixth floor of any taller new building. We feel that using this facade, it doesn't make sense in terms of what it is not historically now, as I've discussed, and what it would do in terms of the gymnastics that it would require to turn it into a facade that is a facade of a building. So this leads to what is the appropriate thing to do? And our feeling is that the appropriate thing to do is something very similar to something the Commission has done very recently with 815 Fifth Avenue, this building here, which retains its more of its rowhouse scale. But given the degree to which this building has been compromised, the Commission decided that the right thing to do is to replace the building with a new building that is an honest straightforward expression of its own time, and that maintains the prevailing, in this case Fifth Avenue facade plane, which is very similar to that of Park Avenue. That's what the Commission decided to do very recently at 815 Fifth, and we feel that it is just what the Commission can find appropriate in this case. So the new building that we're proposing, to Charles?
Let's go back for a minute to one of the images, how do you do this, please? Okay. There, sorry. I just want to point out some of the things that Bill said he was not going to describe for you, which are some of the violations of standards. You spoke to us at December 2nd about what those standards were and suggested that we might do some research. So we went back to the Venice Convention of 1965, the standards of the Secretary of the Interior and the, and many others. I've been working for nine and a half years with architects from Europe who on restoration of the armory, and we have absorbed together and examined many of the standards worldwide. Now, there are some very basic precepts, which are, one, I'm only going to mention three. One, that what you do to a landmark is you do not deceive. And we maintain that this is, this existing building is a very deceptive building. Look at the windows at the top, look at the windows at the bottom. You are not supposed to imitate parts of an existing building and repeat them elsewhere in the same project. You are not supposed to, one of the main things, which is here, you are not supposed to change the entire aspect of a building. Remember that that is only this part down here. I mean, that's essentially it. Our problem with this is that this building is really misleading. This is not about the building that was designated, this is something else. And as Bill has mentioned, there is no reference to it in the records here, it is being approved by the Commission, although it apparently was built either at the time of the designation or certainly after the designation report. And I mean, that's really where I wanted to go with this. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, this is deceptive and misleading building, and it has, as was evidenced by the hearing, misled many, many people as to its historic significance and its historic value.
Thank you, Charles. There are questions for the applicant?
Okay.
All right, okay. Goodness.
Do you have any questions about this?
I just, I think it'd be...
Part 2 of our presentation.
Right, I think it'd just be good if staff just sort of clarifies that in the Historic District Report, which was written, the Designation Report, which was in 1981, is that correct? Okay, that it was described.
The Designation Report was finished in early 80s, late 79.
Okay, early 80s, late 79.
The designation took place in June of 81.
Okay, so however, leaving aside the dates, it does note that it's a five-story building at this location. So I think that we should just be clear that because we've heard testimony about this being a contributing building and/or a style building, so to speak, it, the report was describing a five-story building, and there's nothing in our historical, you know, papers or anything that suggests that the Commission was looking at the 12-story building and identifying it as a building with a style. So there's a conflict here in what was written in the report and what is there today, and one can speculate that maybe they got their building permits at the time of, or somewhere during the period of designation, and they proceeded with those permits, but that was never reflected in the Commission's report.
Nor were the permits registered at the Building Department.
Well, that's a whole scary prospect, but, okay. But just to, again, clarify, the Designation Report, which gives the Commission much guidance about the buildings and which ones are of certain styles, is in conflict with what is there currently on the site. Okay, go ahead, Charles.
To replace this building, we have made a very careful study, and again, we presented this before, and I don't know how much of it you want me to repeat here, but we looked very carefully at the characteristics of Park Avenue within the district.
Right, does the Commission want a presentation on the proposed drawing? Right now, Rota, you'd like?
No, I guess I think we should maybe, since the objection last time, I think the Commissioner was really about whether or not we demolish.
Mm-hmm, we should just discuss that first.
And then there were questions on the, on the proposal.
All right, I think it is the, so maybe we'll call you back for the design itself, but I think the crux of this, of the case, at least the first sort of hurdle or threshold for the Commission to pass is really about the demolition of the building and whether that's appropriate. And today, the team has presented additional arguments. I just want to note before the Commission discusses this is that we have received additional testimony in writing, including seven letters from State Senator Kruger, Congresswoman Maloney, and Borough President Gail Brewer, and Councilmember Gerardneck have submitted a letter, as well as the Historic Park Avenue, friends of the Upper East Side neighbors, and a preservation consultant. And to summarize their issues, they included, of course, they have concerns, so they're considering this a contributing building and the demolition may set precedent. Concerns over the transparency of LPC's process, this is about allowing them to have additional testimony on the record, in other words, to reopen the hearing. And they've also noted that some of the existing alterations are reversible. I just want to put that into the record. All right, so why don't we talk about the building and its demolition, and whether that's appropriate? All right, maybe I can just sort of lead the discussion.
I've been speaking so much.
Thanks a lot, Fred, but, okay. So I think some of the, some of the presentation today at least helped me understand how to look at this building. I think that the experiential aspect of what we see when we go to the site and how it fits in with the district, I think the applicants are correct in saying that this is a 12-story building. And I think, leaving aside its development history, I'm not sure one goes there and experiences it as a five-story building, which is what was identified in the Commission report as a contributing building that was five stories. So I think the building has changed, you know, maybe unfortunately that it has, but that's what we have today. I think that makes the question of whether it's appropriate to demolish somewhat different from maybe the discussion we had last time. And it is a difficult question to grapple with because the building, even though it may violate every historic preservation concept of buildings and how they should develop, but it's still, it's a building that does fit in very well with the neighborhood. But if we were to think, or are to think about its historic fabric, and we as an agency is given the charge to ensure that and protect it, then I don't know whether saving this building necessarily does that. I think that the amount of historic fabric is very limited. It is truly sort of portions of a facade, and I think from that perspective, the removal of that may be appropriate in the context of the district. So this is just some of my thoughts on that aspect, and I'm just curious to know about the other Commissioners as well. Yes, John?
Well, I'm reminded of the situation we had with the church on Park Avenue, where our fundamental concept was that even if we disagreed with what a prior Commission had done in terms of not designating a facade, that we would not, it was not our, within our power or our charge to revisit that decision. Now, while I understand the argument that what was designated was not this entire 12-story building, it doesn't change the fact that a prior Commission designated the first five stories of this facade, whether it had something bonded or not. So we are in some sense now going to do, if we agree to demolish it, we are reversing So we are, in some sense, now going to do, if we agree to demolish it, we are reversing the decision of a commission before us, at least as to that first five stories. So it's the opposite of what we were told we couldn't do once before.
I don't think they necessarily contradict each other, but Mark, why didn't you go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the commission does not generally make determinations based on fragments, just looking at whether a building exists. And I think, so the question is that if in 1981, the commission had in front of it this building, you know, with a fragment with a five, with this building on top of it, how would we have treated it, given the fact that it was but a few years old, that the addition had been put on? What would we be saying? And if we were to say that we believe this is a contributing building, we'd be saying this building as it exists must stay. And I think the real question in front of the commission now is, is what's there now so, does it have integrity? What is it, first of all? Does it have integrity? And if it doesn't, if it's not, if it's neither fish nor fowl, it seems that the decision about it must stay there forever as opposed to being replaced with a building of similar scale and size of what's there now, that's really what you have to look at. So I think the real question is, what is this that you have in front of you? And I think that, as with the Park Avenue, and consistent with that decision, what we have with us is a Park Avenue, a 1963 building. Here we have a 1980s building that was constructed, you know, incorporating a fragment of a pre-existing building. So I think that, in fact, to view it as not a contributing structure is perfectly consistent with the Park Avenue. And I think that it's, that we are, the commission looks at buildings, and I think we need to go back to that. What is this, this structure that you're looking at? And the advocates who are opposed to this keep talking about it as a tenement building, okay? And it's clearly not a tenement building. It is something else.
Yes, Diana?
Yeah, what I was going to say is that, yes, I view it, that we're looking now at what is the current contribution of this building? Is it important enough in its current composition to preserve it as it is, or to require that the portion of it that reflects what probably was the commissioner's original intent, because they probably saw pictures of the five-story building when they were doing the designation, but be that as it may, there is, there are, there is some remnant of that five-story building here, but it is now part and incorporated in this 12-story building. And the question is really, is what is there now, something that we regard as contributing enough to the district that it needs to be preserved either as it is or, I don't know, in some other form? I think that I personally come down on the side that it is not, it is, that what is there is not such an important contribution to the district and so suitable to the district that I feel it needs to be preserved. But I think that's where the judgment is, needs to be made, and, you know, others may or may not feel that way.
Right. I just want to comment on what John had asked before and the comparison between what happened in Park Avenue Historic District when we adopted it and what's happened here. And I think there's just a slight difference in history. So in Park Avenue, the building, which was a vestige of the rectory and parish house, it was considered a facade because there was a 1960s building behind that, and the commission noted that it was no style. In this particular case, I think it's somewhat of a different historical pattern, which is that the commission was looking at one building when it wrote its report, and then when it was adopted and subsequently, there is another building. So I think my concern, or what I was trying to say, is that that document doesn't reflect what is there right now. And so we're actually kind of in the dark because we're not, we don't have a report that can really inform us fully because it's talking about a building at that time, which was probably intact. And then after that, we have a building which is essentially just a facade. That's all.
Well, I guess I have some concern about how we are defining what is and is not the building that was designated. And your risk here is that I was a philosophy major, so we have this theory about, you know, how many, how many bricks do you have to take off the original building? How much change do you have to make in order to change the building?
Right. Although, all I'm noting is that it says it's a five-story building, and it's not a five-story building right now.
Well, that argues for allowing them to chop off the top five, the top seven stories.
Well, that's a different question altogether, which is, I mean, I think that's a different question, whether we should be asking them to chop off five stories. That's not really before us.
Or what it might, or what one might permit, as opposed to eliminating the entirety of the building, which did, it does still include, I think we can acknowledge that, it still does include five stories that were there.
But Commissioner, I just want to be clear that many of the no-style buildings in the Upper East Side building are five-story, they were five-story buildings, and they're stripped five-story buildings now, or were. And the commission had, you know, determined that they could be demolished because they were no style. So the fact that they recalled something that was historic, you know, we are here to protect historic buildings, you know, structures, improvements. And that's why I think what's really important is to look at what is this thing here? We have one, two, we have four stories of facade brick that's historic, and eight, roughly eight stories of 1980-ish brick. And that is what this building is.
But the difference between the buildings that you cite that were, had, were five stories, and this one, is that you're saying they were designated as no style. This one, when it had five stories, when it was this first five stories, am I wrong about that? It wasn't designated no style at that time, right?
Because the commission missed, it was either gone by the time the designation happened, or there were permits, it was built shortly thereafter. So what the commission, its determination of style was for a building that either didn't exist at the time designation, or by law, potentially, was, could be replaced by this building.
Right. So, John, the only thing I'd say, that the report and what it says, and, you know, us taking some direction from the report, is it's just an unusual case over here and somewhat different from the Park Avenue case. I think the issue that Diana raised about how we look at this building is still relevant and whether we think it should be torn down. But remember, our reports only guide us, and, you know, the commission has, in fact, allowed the demolition of style buildings in the past as well. And so there's nothing that's, I think, stops us from using our discretion as we think about this building and its demolition. Yes, Fred?
So, this is really interesting, and I'm happy to sit on this commission, even though I think this is a tough commission, but this, it's a tough case, but this is, these are the interesting dilemmas that we face. Last time around, I was quite on the fence, not about the new building, just about whether the old building should be there or not, even as a fragment or as a building that was incorporated in another building. I think the case was made very eloquently a few minutes ago, for me, step by step, that this is not a build, that the build, that the old building is not a building, it's truly a fragment, and only a fragment. The top cornice has been cut off, removing that piece of it, critical piece of it. The entire bottom floor has been cut off, letting the building not even touch the ground. So it's a fragment, and it's been incorporated into another building, and that's the building we see now. So that helped clarify a little bit for me, I guess, how I'm thinking of it. But also, the presentation was quite persuasive in that there are many other buildings. This is not the only or last remaining piece of a building from that era, that there are many others on Park Avenue that are intact and make, allow the public to understand that Park Avenue wasn't always the 13- or 14-story, you know, luxurious apartment houses that we see today. It was something else, and the layering of that history still can be, can be read. So that was persuasive to me. So the question, we still haven't talked about the new building, and I don't know if we're going to have a big presentation of it, but we, at least I certainly remember it, and I've been looking at it. So the question for me remained, remains then, of whether it's of any interest to the public in terms of interpreting history, to somehow leave this fragment that exists, almost look at this middle picture and view some new building that might be sort of a glassy, sort of very plain, a building that allows this fragment to sit in front of it in some way approaching it. That's not what's being proposed, by the way, but I suppose that could be an approach to leaving that piece of the building. I would submit that that would be a better approach than leaving what's there now, which is truly an amalgam of odd pieces and strange conditions which don't help the public understand the history at all. But given that that's not what's being proposed, I am being more and more persuaded that this building, this fragment of a piece of a building does not, does not have to be incorporated. It might be incorporated if somebody wanted to do that in a different way, but I'm long-winded, I'm sorry, but, you know, that this, that this could be, this could be demolished because it's no longer a building that evokes the era of its construction.
Other comments? Michael?
This is very troubling for me because, yeah, it's extremely tricky. When we're talking about experiential reactions to it, I, in fact, do see the five-story building. None of this means anything because we're talking about precedent, we're talking about many other things here. But in, I don't buy the story, the use of the term fragment in a negative sense, I find mildly objectionable. I think, for me, there is enough here to evoke the five-story building. I look at the base, I see the flanking cast iron pilasters, okay, the street cornice is gone, the supplemental cornice is gone. Those cornices are gone on many buildings, they come back for $25,000 or $30,000, you have another cornice that looks just like that one. Above that, we have a level of arched windows that is clearly original, above that, a beautiful brickwork cornice. Above that, we have a set of rectangular windows with spandrel panels above that that's clearly original. We have segmental arch windows above that, another cornice above that and squared windows. And then, and then the building is truncated where the sheet metal cornice would have been. That, to me, evokes that type of building on this avenue. Now, where, and I apologize, it's only my, I grew up in New Jersey, I have minimal mental capacity, I have not been able to come to grips in the 10 minutes or 15 minutes that we've been looking at this, with the possibility of this having any meaningful suggestion to anyone else walking down the street. I think it may be only my own proclivities to seek evocation when I see a particular type of facade. So, and that said, I look at the 1918 photograph, and the top complete arched windows, it could be a photographic issue, appear to be much more completely, a fully Roman arch like the lower arched windows than in the guidelines photograph provided by the applicant, where the lower windows look like a complete Roman arch, and now the upper windows look like a segmental arch. And I don't know if there's been other work done on this facade. If that, in fact, is the case, it takes it further away from being a useful, evocative artifact for me. And so ultimately, I think if I had to make a decision right now and say, could we demolish this building, would it be a significant loss to the historic fabric of this city? I would probably say no. That the demolition would, could be approvable. All of the, all of the legal ramifications and whatever has happened before as a side, I think I could probably approve this demolition with some reluctance. This is one of those things where I'd let to sit for a weekend and just go over this thing and do another site visit to the building, but that's where I am at this point.
Well, that's good. I can ask you a question. It does say in the materials, we have, they did remove the original windows and frame through, that was in that...
Yes, the sash.
The five stories, they're not original.
So when we, it's just the...
The base and measure.
But in that, in that image that was provided with the Secretary of Interior standards, which can be interpreted in many different ways, thank you very much, it appears that the upper arch windows are now segmental arch rather than a complete Roman arch.
And so, just to say that that segmental arch was not there in the original, is that correct? It wasn't?
Looks totally different.
It looks different?
Yes.
Okay, so I also find this a little troubling because I saw in it, when we looked at it last time, the, like, the watermark, the front tenement, we saw something, and I wanted to somehow maintain that, as we're calling it, memory, wanted to have, to keep that, and I thought that that was important for the community and for the district to have that. And I suppose, though, what I also see now is that having the 12-story or the 11-story version of it, even as a facade, doesn't really get you what you wanted. What you wanted was the memory of the tenement. And so I think as a 12-story facade of building, but that it doesn't necessarily, I think, now add anything to the district. But I haven't, I hadn't completely given up on the idea that the five-story something could still be somehow incorporated as something that has that memory. That is, but I accept that the 12-story version does not achieve that. So I'm still seeing...
John, do you want to add a thing? I don't know what's happening on the other side of this. Because I think the issue of design and incorporating the, sort of, that stage or the style is a different issue from the actual issue. Because I think that's what happened last time, we started thinking about trying to incorporate, and they haven't actually made their presentation on their existing buildings and proposed buildings yet, and how they do that, and I'm just trying to...
Well, I think last time, or I thought we made up, we said that, but in terms of the entire story, but I don't know if we were talking about just the five or the 12, but yes.
Mixed comments and that.
Well, there was some mixed, mixed comments and that. Do you want to add anything now?
No, I just, there's, there seems there are two issues. There's a threshold issue, which is can you demolish? And I'm not there. And if you ask the next question, if you're going to demolish, that's a whole different issue. But first question is whether you're going to demolish, and I'm not there.
May I raise a point of order, please? I have a president of a building next door, what do you think?
No, I'm sorry, you cannot speak in the rec, you could submit to any comments to us.
I might raise one question.
I'm sorry.
Why, why are you not allowing testimony on the answer of preservation?
I think it's best to...
When you reopen extensive testimony of the head of demolition, where is the fairness and where is the transparency of your process? This is very troubling. We have a thorough preservation consultant here who has worked extensively on this. I would think that you would want to do one, you would want to hear what she has to say. Am I making that request?
All right, I, I understand that, and I, I, I think we've been clear that we will take written testimony, and we have received written testimony, including the report by Marie, and it's, we have, in fact, I think it's been distributed to all the commissioners as well.
The developers' consultants have given extensive additional oral testimony.
I'm sorry, we're not taking any additional testimony.
Okay, good. Let's note the fact that you are refusing to do that, you're not hearing the full story, and your process is very troubling.
All right. Okay, so I think our next step is, we don't have a full quorum right now to, to speak on that issue of demolition.
Could you just take it to the microphone, please?
Sorry, so the commissioners, except for John, is just withholding comment right now, but we can take, we can have them present the design to us right now, and, yes.
You can, you can vote on the demolition, and you have a, you have a quorum present, and a majority, even a majority of the quorum.
Right, I know, but I don't think we're ready to do that right now. All right, so, but in terms of just the presentation of the building, should we take that right now or when they come back? Commissioners, would you, yes? Just to sort of clarify, and I think for, for John, is whether it's about retaining the fragment or retaining the entire building?
The, if the issue is demolished, the question is whether you, I would agree to demolishing the entire structure, the answer is no.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, so I think, yes.
Just so, I think the record's clear and the applicant understands, but it is your, it's your thought, John, that if, if, if the, if the fragment was not demolished and they came in with a building, a new, eight stories on top of that, done, that you would be open to that? Is that, is that your test?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Consider that preferable as well.
All right, so I think the direction really is about whether you can come back and, you know, flesh out the design, look to see if you can incorporate the fragment, and then just give us a full presentation of what the implications of that are. And I think some of the commissioners have commented about somehow the, sort of recalling the history, so there, you could do that in design, you can do that in retaining the facade, but I think we haven't, I don't know if you're prepared to speak to that right now, but I think it's worthwhile going back.
We would like to come back.
You'd like to come back? Okay, very good. Yes, Diana?
I was going to say that maybe one other thing we need to say, though, is, are we looking for in the retention of the five stories in some format, that the, is that a direction? Usually we say we don't want a building to look like it's a, I'll call it a foul building, you know, a made-up building. So are we saying that it should be distinct, that fragment?
It's right there in the Secretary of the Interior Standards, that it should not be a replication of the building.
Well, but these are our standards. I just thought we should, we should make it clear that we're not saying to them, go off and...
I think some of the commissioners are open to having the entire fragment taken away and, and a different building. Some of them think it's preferable, and, but I think, I think they have to just come up with something that we can at least compare it to because we haven't seen that.
I just wanted to make sure that, they were clear, whatever the direction was, that we weren't asking them to say, make it look like these five stories fit in, they should, they should be appropriate, but it shouldn't look like it was necessarily built that way. You're, you're making a separation between the five, that's, that's all I, for their benefit.
Right. Well, I think they, that incorporating the, the facade is, is a design challenge, and I think we would want to see a design which can excel in that and not make it seem like it's something just slapped on, and...
Because what happened with the 12-stories was, in fact, that's what they tried to do. They came along with the five-story and then built something that they thought would look like...
The 12-stores, but we're not saying...
Yeah, yeah, no.
And I think that the intent is really to have, to see if we can't maintain this, this idea of the memory. And to do that, it should somehow have to look just, be separate from what it was.
In the meantime, we should all read Paul Fire's book on petitions.
We can do that, that'll be...
Partner.
All right. Charles, you want anything else to add, or we'll bring you back, and come back. I think you'd need to, you can make the presentation, but I think we really would like to see some kind of effort to really think about how one can incorporate it. Okay? Yes, and we're going to close the hearing. Thank you.